A number of things that can be broken down into three basic categories. One being the proffer formula, the funding formula. The second one, the student yield and the proffer communication plan. So with that, I'm gonna go ahead and let Greg get started.
Thank you. Thank you. Superintendent Garza, Chairman Darrenette Kofax, board members. Here's your talk about development review, proffers, and student yield ratios. So the goals for the presentation? So the goals for the presentation today are to, again, review the development review and proffer process. We're going to talk about the development review student yield ratios related to the proffer process.
Okay, pause for a technical difficulty here.
Thank you. Perfect. Thank you very much. Go ahead and catch up here. And finally, our goal of the presentation today is to review possible options for consideration by the board members related to proffers and development review. So first, a little bit of background on proffers. The residential development criteria implementation motion that was adopted by the Board of Supervisors in 2002, that's included in your information. This implementation motion really set the framework for proffers, the proffer contribution formula, as well as the development student yield ratios. And this methodology that we have in place, that was adopted in 2002, is still in place today. We do do updates to the formula calculations. When we get new construction costs and student numbers, we do rerun the formula to get updated numbers for proffers. But again, the methodology stays the same from year to year. As a reminder, proffers are a voluntary contribution with the development, and they are to mitigate the impact of that development. Finally, proffers are typically monetary contributions, but we do at times receive land dedication, historically more so in the past than today. On the screen, you'll see a flow chart. This chart is designed to represent facilities and transportation steps in the development review and proffer process. While these are our steps, the processes are really county processes for rezoning and comprehensive plan amendments. Those go through the county. The FCPS serves as a review agency for these applications. And ultimately, it's the Board of Supervisors that votes on approval of a rezoning or a comprehensive plan amendment. And in the case of a rezoning, also their vote sets the proffers for that rezoning. Also on the screen, on the right-hand side, are three communication points that I'll go over. These are communication points during the process where a facility and transportation updates board members on the status of the projects going through this process. They are the development review impact memo, the approval notices, and then the proffer receipt memos. With the development review impact memos, these memos primarily look at, first, what are the status of capacities and CIP projects at the schools that would be impacted by development? Secondly, what is in the proposed development in terms of number of units, types of units, and then, of course, the impact from that development in terms of a number of students? And then based upon the impact of the students, recommendations are made for proffer contributions and facilities for schools. Second, upon approval of a rezoning, an update is sent out through the superintendent's update that lets board members know about rezonings that were approved, the number and type of units were approved, estimated students we're anticipating from that development, as well as an estimated proffer. At this point, these are when rezonings are just approved, so the proffer amount is an estimated amount. In the future, as developments are built, that's at the point where we will start to receive proffer funding. When that proffer funding is received, another communication goes out to board members. This communication is to notify board members of the amount of proffer funding that was received, the schools impacted by the development that the funding is eligible for, as well as information about the specific proffer language and the state code regulations that specify how proffers should be spent. These memos go out to the board members, regional assistant superintendents, as well as principals, to receive feedback on project requests for the spending of this expenditure of those proffers. As far as proffer tracking, we do track proffers. You should receive the report outlining proffers from 2003. These proffers are tracked, both paid and unpaid proffers. We do report our proffer expenditures to the state as required by state code. As far as proffer distribution, when we send out the proffer receipt memo and ask for requests from school board members and principals, once we receive those requests, those are taken to division council, and we review them with the division council to make sure the requests conform with both the state code language for expenditure of proffers, as well as the specific proffer language from the rezoning. At that point, the project requests are taken to the proffer advisory team. That's a team of facilities and transportation staff that reviews the requests from school based staff and school board members. We look at the CIP. We look at the expertise of the team members to see what are the needs at the schools that are eligible for funding, and then a recommendation is made for the expenditure of those funds. Then Mr. Plattenberg confers with the school board members about what the distribution of those funds would be. This is the proffer formula in the 2002 methodology. It's a bit complex, but we'll walk through it. On the left-hand side is the formula in its entirety. On the right-hand side are some subcomponents of the formula. There are some calculations within the calculation, so I'll walk you through those. As you can see, the different components that feed into the formula first is the building construction cost, what it costs per student to construct both elementary, middle, and high school facilities. Based upon these numbers, a weighted average is calculated to get a per-student cost. The next step is to make an adjustment for modular construction, recognizing that school capacity is provided by modular construction as well. This adjustment is made for an updated per-student contribution amount. And finally, there's a level of service adjustment. The level of service adjustment recognizes that while students are attending the school system from new development, the schools they are attending may be existing in older facilities. So this adjustment wasn't made to count for the fact that not all students are going to new facilities, and this is something we'll talk about a little bit more when we get to the options for consideration. Here's a slide on proffer funds received. You'll see at the chart at the bottom of this slide is a snapshot of funds we've received since 2010. As you can see, the bars go up and down. Proffer funding is a very variable funding source. It's not consistent. It's unpredictable. It's based upon the progress of development. And the timing of when proffers are paid by developers is tied to various triggers such as site plan approval, building permit approval, occupancy. So they're really not date-specific, that the funding comes in as the projects track forward. So I just wanted to point out the variability of proffer funding. Here we can see what we refer to as the development, residential development monitoring. It's really three key steps. First, the comprehensive plan, planning studies phase of residential development, next rezoning, and finally, enrollment projections. Just to break it down a little bit, the top two parts, comprehensive planning and rezoning, are what we're talking about here as part of the development review process. The bottom of the triangle represents how residential construction is factored into enrollment projections based upon county IPLs housing forecast. We do consider new construction in our enrollment projections, but that is just one piece of the enrollment projections process. The process for projections is very complicated, and this housing piece is just one piece of that. But there is a relationship between development review and enrollment projections in terms of monitoring housing. And on the left and right-hand side of the triangle, you notice how the triangle kind of comes to a point at the bottom. This is to recognize, as you're going through these different steps, you're kind of focusing in and honing in on housing, whether it's the scope of development, which starts off very broad at the comprehensive planning stage, where we're looking at large areas like Tyson's Corner, or Reston, or Seven Corners, these larger planning areas. And then as we go down the triangle towards enrollment projections, and we get forecast housing, it's parcel-by-parcel forecast housing. So in terms of the scope of development, we're really starting to narrow from a broader area to a specific area. And likewise, on the, we call the horizon or the timeline, at the comprehensive plan level, these are long-range, 10-, 20-, 30-year plans. By the time you get down to the IPLs forecast housing and enrollment projections, you're looking at a much shorter term, one- to six-year timeframe. So both from the size of the development, as well as the timeline, you're focusing in as you go through this process. And at the development review point, we're kind of at a higher level, bigger picture, longer-term stage of housing development. So just briefly, a couple examples here in Tyson's Corner. The very top left side, you'll see the colored map. That's the Tyson's Corner plan. As you step down, next is the rezoning of Arbor Row. You can see on the screen, there are several buildings shown within this rezoning plan. And then finally, we have one residential building that's under construction. It's at this point where you get to the parcel-specific stuff, but you're kind of getting more focused as you're stepping through the process. Likewise, in terms of timeline, the Tyson's Plan was reviewed by FCPS in the 2006 to 2008 timeframes, about seven to nine years ago, and we've received several, or reviewed several rezonings in that area, which are listed on the right-hand side of the screen. As you can see, there's various levels of development that have occurred with those rezonings. In total, there were about eight buildings approved with these three rezonings. One has been built and occupied. One is under construction. Eight, or six of the eight, still remain with no activity. Shifting to student yield ratios, the ratios we use for development review are really geared towards sort of the long-term impacts of housing on schools. What's the impact in terms of both long-range school facilities and proffers that would go towards supporting those school facilities? The student yields we get from using these ratios are estimates. They're not projections, but they're estimates of future students we would anticipate. The ratios we use are county-wide, and those county-wide ratios are specified in the implementation motion from 2002, when the proffer methodology was established. There's four different categories for the ratios, and at the bottom of the screen is our formula. And we'd like to note that these are actual students, our September 30th enrollment that we're using. They're geocoded into our GIS database, and we're also able to get GIS housing data from the county and match these students to housing, which gives us an actual ratio of students to housing within the county. On the screen here, you'll see our most updated student yield ratios. These just went out the end of November, and you should have received a copy of that letter. The ratios are updated regularly as we get the new student enrollment and new housing. One thing we would point out, as these are updated regularly, we do see changes in the ratios. For example, the low-rise multifamily, multifamily four stories and less, that's gone up 63% since 2005. So the ratios do adjust to reflect trends that are happening in the community. And we also get asked, how accurate are these ratios that we're using? So we did a sampling of about 45 residential projects countywide. You'll see the areas circled in red that we looked at. We looked at a variety of housing from single-family to townhouse to multifamily. In total, when looking at these 45 projects, 67% were near or below the estimated yield. Of those that were above the estimated yield, 93% were a single-family and townhouse. Looking at single-family overall, all the single families we sampled, 70% were above ratio. Looking at all the multifamily that we sampled, 95% were near or below ratio. And when I say the "near," the student yield ratio is within 2/100 of what we anticipated at the time. Total unit-wise, sample was about 8,800 units. About 300 of those were single-family. So from a unit count, we really are seeing very little in the way of a single-family compared to multifamily, which we saw about 7,900 units in this sample. So multifamily is really where we're seeing the bulk of new units, and as we note, they are falling near or below ratio. And if you were to look at the total estimated students for these 45 projects, we estimated about 1,400 students. Currently enrolled are about 860. So you can see there's quite a difference between what we were estimating and the number that came in below. But single-family is that one category that does stick out. So with that, in summary, we've talked about the communication points through the process. We've talked about the receipt of proffer funds can vary over time, the proffer process, both the notification, the distribution, and the tracking of funds, as well as the student yield ratios we just looked at. So from some options for consideration, first is a review of the proffer formula methodology. As I mentioned, that remains the same as it's been since 2002. And in particular, that level of service adjustment at the end of the formula, that has a big impact on the formula, so we think that's something that could be reevaluated. Secondly, the single-family development review ratios, as I know, that's the one category that we're coming in a little high than we estimate. And then finally, looking at the county comprehensive plan. That's the county's long-range plan for development, and we think that's something that's important to be updated. As one example, we received a school site in the Tyson's Corner area that was dedicated to the school system. That was specifically called for in the comprehensive plan. So having that background and that language in the plan for the school site really helps us when we get to rezonings and we're asking for school facilities, having that language there is of great value. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Plattenberg, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Greg. Mr. Moon, members of the school board, Dr. Garza. So in essence, what we've basically shown is that we do communicate at multiple touchpoints across the process. There are three different iterative points. A lot of it is developing and unfolding, as Greg had mentioned, during the development process in terms of the proffer identification and the stage of construction and the plan. Our accuracy of development of student yield ratios, I think Greg did an outstanding job of pointing out where we're doing well, where we have opportunities. The majority of our developments are multi-dwelling, and we're pretty much hitting it out of the park in terms of our accuracy. Now, in terms of single-family, we have an opportunity. In terms of the actual amount of proffers, we have a large space there for improvement. So, you know, one of the recommendations or considerations for an option is really to take a look at that, because we think that we're a little short. Keep in mind, it's part of an overall overarching county strategy, either to be business-friendly or to not have such an impact or a burden on any future revitalization or development. But what we're looking forward to is potentially having a conversation about that, to see if it needs to be revisited. So with that, Mr. Moon, we're ready for any questions.
Okay, thank you for the presentation. Let me ask, you know, a couple of questions before I go to Mrs. Strauss. My very first question has to do with the way the initial formula had been developed that was done by Board of Supervisors in consultation with the school system. Is that correct at the time, back in 2002?
That's correct. In consultation, the school board, the planning commission, and the Board of Supervisors, and of course, school staff worked together on that development.
Okay, thank you. Next question that I have is a little bit of a legal side, is cash proffer, you know, most of the proffers we get from developers for the schools, a cash proffer is correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And those cash proffers, does Virginia statute allow us to mandate that on developers, or is it completely voluntary, and that gets considered as a part of development process?
You are correct. It's voluntary.
It's voluntary, so we cannot legally mandate that.
We cannot legally mandate, and there are legal constraints that were voted and enacted last year for the use and purpose of those funds for school districts.
Okay. One last question that I have is, when we get, based upon the formula, when we get the amount as a cash proffer, it is just for the number of students above the buyright development, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
So if the buyright development, it may be a vacant land, but if the buyright development would be yielding, let's say, 20 students, for that 20 students, if, as long as a developer builds a lot, according to his or her buyrights, we're not going to be able to collect any cash proffer. Only when there is a rezoning that ears the number of students above buyright, and for that excess students, we get cash proffer. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Excellent clarifying questions.
Okay, with that, Mr. Strauss.
Okay, I have a couple of quick questions. This is very helpful. I'm very glad that we're getting this presentation. First of all, you talked about the legal constraints last year. Can you specifically indicate what those were?
The legal constraints, Ms. Strauss, were to go ahead and provide for capacity enhancements, in essence, for school purposes based upon the student impact.
I know in the formula, we estimate a lower cost for modular buildings. However, when we look at long-term planning, long-term planning is really more bricks and mortar, so.
Correct. Really, we don't usually have any new trailer developments, if you will call them that, or modular developments in Fairfax County. So it really is something that could be taken off of the equation, but it's on there to be comprehensive, to include any type of development.
Okay. And then my last, well, the other question is, looking back on the slide that has Horizon of Development, Tyson's Corner timeline, where exactly is the land that has been given to us? Right. Can you, can you identify what region?
Yeah. Right up, is it here, come on?
All right, let me see.
It's on the north side of Tyson's here, off of Jones Branch Road.
So it's off of?
Across in this area up here. Off of Jones Branch.
So it's where the, near the McLean Hilton is what I'm hearing from Ryan. Is that right?
I believe so. I'm not sure.
Okay, it's Jones Branch and West Park, and I believe that's next to where there's also supposed to be Park Authority land. Is that right? Okay, and then my last question is, in the timing of the funding, and it's my understanding that when, when we put in the proffer amount, it's based on the actual cost of construction at the time that that construction takes place. In other words, it's not based on the time that the rezoning application is approved, because the cost of construction can escalate over time.
Exactly. We have escalation clauses to account for that.
Okay, and then, of course, the big question is, can we renegotiate the cost of all of this?
Well, that's part of one of the considerations that we're asking for, is to really open up that dialogue again to see if we're current. It is a delicate balance, I think, as Mr. Moon kind of pointed out with some of his questions about the voluntary nature of it.
Right. Okay. In your professional judgment, should it be opened for renegotiation?
In my professional judgment, I think one thing that we're doing is we're taking a look at the surrounding jurisdictions to see where they are. And really, to open that discussion. The proffer process, the delicate dance that's done with that, in my opinion, is that there are many types of proffers that are provided and many types of incentives that are voluntary. And for a developer to have voluntary contributions, they may consist of road, infrastructure. So we may have, in Fairfax, certain elements that are being contributed, and therefore, the proffer contribution for schools, based upon the impact of that, may be the de minimis or the smaller version of the equation. But that being said, it's careful not to be an overburden on development and impede that process. So there is a delicate balance, but just to have that conversation, since 2002, my professional opinion is it's ripe for a discussion, even if that discussion doesn't change anything.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have a Mrs. Schultz to be followed by Mr. Stork, Ms. McElvin, and Mrs. Smith. And Mrs. Schultz.
And I'm sorry to have missed the beginning. We've all had a challenging morning. With regard to the ratios that you have set up, and I don't know which specific page we had where we were showing the ratios by type of housing, single-family, multi-dwelling, townhouse, how, from whence are these ratios derived? I mean, is there an industry standard, if you will, or is there a geographic standard? I mean, where are you deriving the ratio in the first place?
Briefly, a little bit of background. The ratio, to use a countywide average, comes from the 2002 implementation motion that was adopted by the Board of Supervisors. And to calculate that countywide ratio, we look at all the students that reside in FCPS with our September 30th enrollment. We geocode those by location, and then from the county, we get housing data by location. So we're able to match each student to a particular housing type, single-family, townhouse, low-rise multifamily, mid- and high-rise multifamily. And then we're able to do the math, how many students live in each of the housing types, and then we derive the ratio for the four different categories.
But you're deriving a ratio from an actual past, from a past actual?
Yes, from our most.
And from 2002?
No. The, I'm sorry, the student yield ratios are updated regularly. So every year, we get new students, new housing. We rerun the numbers.
So, but again, the ratio is not a statistical, it's not predictive analysis. It's based on past actual.
Well, it's a good, good question that you're asking, but one of the statements that was made is our percent accuracy. We went ahead and did a sampling based upon developing and...
You read ahead on my notes, because my next question was, where did you get, where did you get, I mean, how did you determine the sample from which to draw to do the calculation of accuracy?
So what we did was we looked at, what are the areas where we're seeing development based upon the rezonings that we've reviewed? So we have prior information as to what we were estimating at the time we were doing that review, and we looked at various areas of the county. We didn't want to zone in on one particular area of the county. We looked at various areas of the county, and we looked at various housing types within each of those areas. So one area, we didn't sample just single families or just townhouses. We tried to review a variety of housing types in each area, and we used that to pull up 45 units, 45 projects.
But was this, again, you know, we're, and I don't mean to ask too technical of a question, but who selected the sample? Was this a random, is this predictive analysis? You know, what, I mean, did you just look at a neighborhood and said, well, you know, we've had some growth there, so let's just go check that neighborhood? I mean, I'm trying to figure out, from a scientific basis, how the sampling was done.
Well, the sampling was based upon similar-type groupings of development, based upon our projections and the actual. So by taking the basic difference between the projected calculation that was done off of the student yield and the actual yield that was achieved based upon the student GIS coding data, we were able to determine what a percent accuracy was. It was a very simple baseline.
And did you do that, and was that, was that sampling done over what period of time? So you have a percentage accuracy from what time to what time, and over what period of time did you repeat that?
This was done looking at projects built since 2003, so projects that have been built within the past 10 years. And it was a snapshot for what are, what's happening this school year.
Housing projects or school projects?
Housing. So these are looking at 45 residential housing developments that have been built since 2003, and the sampling was done this past November, looking at our most recent student enrollment data. And for each one of those projects, I went back and I looked at what was the development review memo at the time that rezoning was reviewed, so what were we saying we thought we would receive in student yields at the time of rezoning, and then what do we have today in terms of student yields from that development?
So you're talking about yield, not necessarily student population projection overall, you're talking from a particular development that was built?
Exactly.
And did we accurately at that specific time?
Correct.
Well, you know, I'll have more questions, as Mr. Plattenberg can imagine and Mr. Sneak can imagine, you know, in a follow-up. Because for me, the important part is, have we scientifically sampled a broad enough number across the county, as opposed to just going to, okay, well, there were places that we knew that were going to be built, and were those places that we've chosen to check the accuracy on accurate? That's a little bit of a different take, and the question is, over time, over 196 schools, you know, are our ratios holding up, and what, what percentage does this have in terms of the overall student population? Is this where most of the students are coming from, our new developments, or do we have a student yield that's substantially greater? So, you know, I don't want to spend all of our time looking at where 1/10th of 1% of our students come from. You understand what I'm saying?
Right. Absolutely.
But I do want to clarify. You aren't picking just some areas to do a stratified random sample. What you did is you looked at every single, you included every single circumstance since 2003 in that analysis, is what I heard you say, in terms of the housing.
He said they took 47 samples.
Yeah. We took sampling of actuals, of different types of dwelling units, and to Ms. Schultz's point, the, we do, and that's why the accuracy rate for our multiple, multi-dwelling units, which is the propensity of dwelling that we have being developed nowadays, our accuracy rate is pretty impressive. Single-family, we have an opportunity to further the discussion per your comments.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I have a Mr. Stork to be followed by Ms. McElvin.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. I have some, I guess probably broader questions. First is, and you kind of covered this, there are obviously different kinds of proffers. We under- we understand that. We have a, ours focuses particularly on the school proffer. There's, the Board of Supervisors asks for and, and looks for different kinds of proffers. And then, since it's all voluntary, in the end, it's all negotiated, what goes to one kind of a proffer and what goes to another kind of a proffer? Can you, can you give us some, give me some sense of what that is?
Well, the, Mr. Stork, what I can do is, the, the proffer process is really a Board of Supervisor, the elected officials at that level, their process that was initiated. If you look at it as a, their purview of the initial development, again, it wasn't until 2002 that we actually started receiving proffers for the impact on educational uses, unless the elected counterpart, for your colleagues on the Board of Supervisor level, chose to write in the language. And the language that they wrote, sometimes specific, sometimes vague, determined the use. And that's why it's been, like most things, it's been an evolution to where we've been receiving the amounts that were reported out here. And, and actually some more in some of the revisioning that are now coming in for school use. But there are, those determinations, those initial negotiations, yes, are conversations between the Board of Supervisor member initially and-
So, of course, my question is, if you have a piece of property, and, and even if there's, even if the use, usage doesn't change, the developers still may, still may want to offer some kind of proffer just to speed the process along, at least in their eyes, to, so that can, can include a lot of different things, including roads as well as schools. That formulation, that, how that mix is determined, is solely within the ability of, in essence, the Board of Supervisors determine, or there is some kind of, the developers can stipulate that, no, I think this part of it should go for? In other words, is it a negotiated process with the developer, developner, developer, or is it strictly more of a Board of Supervisors designation or determination as to how that, how that proffer gets split up?
It's ultimately the Board of Supervisors, although I would add, with the 2002 implementation motion that set forward these formulas and criterias, that's fairly standardized the school proffer.
Okay.
So when we do our impact memo, and we make a recommendation to the county for a certain proffer contribution for development, we're pretty much getting that contribution.
Okay, that's only the question I'm asking.
Yeah, the implementation motion that was put in place really helped the school side of things to get sort of that standard proffer coming in the door. Now, you know, how that interacts with the other pieces of the proffer is certainly the Board of Supervisors' process.
Okay. And then, related to that, and I, if you don't know the answer to this quickly, then, then give it to me offline, because I have two other questions I want to ask. For the turf field proffers, the use of the proffers for turf fields, do we know if that's coming out of school money, or if that's coming out of, of Board of Supervisors' money, or, or combination of both?
Well, my, working with the county staff, were that there were proffer contributions that were coming out of the county contribution, as well as ones, the funding that was set aside during the budget review by the school board. But it's not taking it from yours, it's really taking it from a project theirs for the purpose of artificial turf.
So to our knowledge, it's not coming out of the school capacity enhancement-
Correct.
-which is our, our state mandate about how we spend the money. Okay? And then, you, you really did a nice job of covering, I guess, the sampling of different yields. But I, I didn't see or hear anything in there, and it's particularly, particularly concerning to me, given our past experience with this, that there's nothing that talks about the difference in a new community yield versus an older community yield. And I'm, I'm going to just say, South County and, and board members at the time know exactly what I'm talking about, but we had appropriate yields, we thought, at the time, for the South County development. We were way off, because it was frankly a new community that had a whole different level of interest of younger families wanting to go there and use that. So can you comment on that?
I can. In some cases, when developments turn over, if you will, twenty years out, has been some of the experience that we've had. When pricing becomes more affordable for multi-offspring families to move into developments that may have been a little more cost prohibitive, and therefore it was a different type of community, that has been the biggest significant impact that we have seen. There are some communities that are developed with the intention to, or the idea at least, to keep it that way from-
So I guess my question really, Mr. Plattenberg, to get to, because I realize we have limited time, is, is, will the, will that be included with future formulations for yields? Or is that something you just don't see is, it's, there's enough of it to worry about? And, and I would add to that, like metro-related, metro-related development might have a different impact, because if it's metro-related, it may be more non-child-based, because it may be more, you know, young professionals, or whatever you want to call it. So is that, are you looking at adjusting or looking to change that?
We definitely could consider it, but it is a pretty speculative venture, but we definitely could consider that.
So I would, I guess I would just urge on my part to look at that, particularly the Huntington Metro area and Penda, those are all being developed as a result of Huntington Metro. I'm sure the folks here for Tyson's can talk about that even more broadly and strongly than I can, but I, I think it's essential that we, we try to go back and, if you will, assess what that has been in the past, so we get a decent, appropriate yield, but I think we should look at that differently than we do other kinds of yields. Thank you.
Ms. McElvin and Ms. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. So my comment is actually only process-based. And it is that when you come to the board at that stage of the process to do the project request piece, it currently, from my understanding, only goes to magisterial district members. The at-large are not looped into that process whatsoever. And over the past year, I've seen some questionable things done when it's gone to magisterial members that has been concerning to me. And so my request of you would be to kind of think of a way that we might be included in the process, even if it's just informational.
Absolutely. Be happy to.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McElvin. There are three at-large members, not just Mr. McElvin, please. And Mrs. Smith, to be followed by Ms. Evans and Mrs. McLachlan.
I guess maybe I would take what Ryan said one step further. I think one of the things that works well with our board is that we're all aware, because we're responsible for things in the county, that there should be an awareness by the whole board of what's happening in these things, because we are responsible for the resources that get used in the county. So I, I think we should all be informed about how things work with the proffers. One of the things that you raised in this, when you talked about your options for consideration, is that level of service piece. And, and it, it is kind of hard to figure out why it gets reduced to fifty percent when you're talking about new growth creating a need for new facilities. So if you could talk to that a, a little bit more, and, you know, is there something we should be advocating for about that?
Well, as I stated, Ms. Smith, I mean, it's a very good question. I think it is, how much is the market willing to bear? And I think the, by being development-friendly, especially in the revisioning, we want to have a conversation about that piece. But we believe that when the minds that came together, not only the Planning Commission, but the Board of Supervisors and school board members and staff, back when this was developed, I think the idea was that that seemed like a fair and reasonable formulaic approach. But certainly, when I read the methodology, things went off in, in our minds previously, we've always kind of wondered about that. And that's why we started looking in at surrounding jurisdictions. But when we started looking at surrounding jurisdictions, there were so many different elements that they were getting for, as I think Mr. Stork had mentioned, about infrastructure, roads, sewer. So, you know, we believe that it, because it's 2002, it would be good to have that conversation again. But I don't, I don't know, is the answer, as to whether or not we're receiving our proportionate share.
I mean, so this is one of the difficulties. I was on the board in that 2002, '03 timeframe when we did this, and Kay Corey's the one that took the lead to push, and we met with the Planning Commission and all it. It took a lot of meetings to get us to move forward to get something. I think one of the inherent problems is this, is that school board members aren't part of an equal conversation, so it's good that there's a formula to drive something, but you don't know how much that gets affected. You know, in certain districts, the supervisors are going to push for funding for athletic facilities, or, you know, whatever other improvements. So then, at least we have a formula that says we're getting this yield for, for students, because we aren't part of that conversation. So I'm hearing you're not really sure if it's going to get us anywhere, but I don't even know where you would start the conversation. I mean, is it a staff-to-staffed conversation? Is it something that the board needs to get involved more?
We would like to initiate staff-to-staff initially, and then, you know, depending on how that turns out, definitely provide it as a follow-up onto, well, what we found out, what we experienced, and therefore also gain our comparison to give you some context.
Okay.
I mean, back in, back in 2002, I was on the Planning Commission, and as a Planning Commissioner, we worked on this, you know, developing this formula at the time, was for the first time for the Fairfax County, and there were a lot of back-and-forth compromise. That's my recollection.
I agree with that. I have one more question. You know, staff is looking at the comprehensive plan to see what gets put in there about schools, but I don't think the board does enough. And I, I, you know, that's a consideration I'd, I'd like us to know, is, is there some kind of education that the board should have for us to have a better awareness of what happens in the comprehensive plan and understanding of what's there?
I can tell you, I don't know if there's something that this board as a body would like to be educated on, or, or provide information about the comprehensive planning, or comprehensive plan as amended. I can tell you that the staff-to-staff dialogue has been very good, with features shown, I think, as Mr. Boken mentioned, the Tyson's Corner revisioning, by being able to have a site shown, and their conversations about it, including language for future features shown, is nothing but a positive move in the right direction. I know that doesn't answer your question, but-
Okay, thank you. I have a Ms. Evans, to be followed by Mrs. McLachlin and Ms. Hines.
Thank you. I appreciate the, the, the excellent presentation. I do have several questions, actually, on the, the student yield. And, you know, Mr. Plattenberg and Mr. Sneak and I have had some of these conversations in the past. Like a couple of my colleagues, I, I take note that this is a countywide student yield ratio formula. And one of my concerns has been differences within particular areas, and particularly, I guess I'll, I'll ask the question, I think I know the answer, but you don't take into account, then, projected housing prices, or the level of housing prices within the different types of housing, when you, when you consider the student yield, correct?
We do not. I guess a couple of points to that. One is, we don't always know what the housing price will be at the time we're reviewing it at rezoning, which, again, is before it's approved, before it's constructed. So not only do we typically not know the price at that point, then you also have to know, well, what's the price point going to be when it's actually after construction, after occupancy, it's on the market, what are the market conditions at that point in time? So I think there is some uncertainty there, in terms of where, where you are price-point-wise. And again, going back to the implementation motion in 2002, it kind of set out how we're supposed to do these yield ratios in terms of using the countywide number. So that's, that's where we are with that.
But it's fair to say that we're likely to get a higher yield out of affordable housing than we are out of luxury housing, even of the same type?
Possibly. And I think also the point would be, depending on unit type, I think you can see differences between single-family versus multifamily across price points. So I think you could have on both sides, whether it's the, the value of the, the unit, but also what type of unit it is.
You mean one-bedroom, two-bedroom?
Multifamily versus single-family-
Okay.
-as well.
I, I still think that this is something that we should pursue. I, I gather you also don't take into account birth rates in particular areas when you do the student yield ratio.
Not for development review. Again, this is looking just at-
Right.
-properties that are being rezoned.
Mm-hmm.
So when you get to projections, that's a big piece of the projection process, when they're doing school-wide enrollment. This is just rezoning, school by school.
Right. And I, I guess that's where I'm coming from, that because we have, you know, I, I keep having to explain to my, my community that, yes, here's our projection for this certain area, even though we, we know we currently have doubled the number of students there in actuality. And so I, I do think there's a disconnect there, that I, I would, as one board member, like to see that evened out in some way, if we could, if we could properly project. And I realize what you've said, Mr. Plattenberg, about older housing, you know, when housing gets older, that's a different yield than when it's brand-new. At the same time, we have to be thinking about the schools for a very long time, you know, not just when, when it opens. So that's one thing. And I, I appreciate the fact that you have done this sampling. I, I would be interested in seeing the, the data behind it, which, you know, which forty-five you looked at, and, and what you found at each one of those, if that would be all right with, with my colleagues. I, I would ask for that information to, to go back on that. Do we know what our surrounding jurisdictions do in terms of student yield ratio?
I don't fully have that information available. I have, take a look, Greg and I had taken a look at a cursory sampling.
Uh-huh.
But because it was so convoluted, we wanted to go ahead and make sure that if there was a desire for us to follow up with the direction of looking, relooking, to also go ahead and take a look at surrounding jurisdictions, so we could provide some contextual discussion points.
Well, I would advocate to do that. I think that that would be useful for us to know what, what our, the immediate surrounding areas do. One thing that my community has raised, and I raise it with you here today, we have a lot of schools, of course, that are at capacity and overcapacity and projected to be overcapacity. Would it be worthwhile to consider some sort of a bonus proffer in a case where a residence is going to add students at a school that's already overcapacity?
I'm trying to understand a bonus proffer. I know they're voluntary.
In other words, I mean, we have, you know, we have a certain amount that we, we ask per student, that we, I think our latest one is eleven thousand and something. The, but of course, if we're, if we're pouring students into schools that are overcapacity, we're going to have to spend more to deal with them, with an addition, with whatever.
Like a greater impact ratio or something like that.
Right. So in other words, would that be something that we might want to consider?
Yeah, I think that's something we could look at as part of our review of the proffer formula, and look into that, and see maybe surrounding jurisdictions may have something like that, or another place may have something like that.
Okay. Excellent. I just had one other question, and that was, we did receive some emails from F-PAC members about the amount of proffers, and at least in a couple of emails we received, which I believe, Mr. Plattenberg, you've seen one of them, suggesting that we should probably ask for about double. So I wanted to get your response to, to that suggestion.
Yeah, you know, we, we don't have a difficulty with a lot of the, the recent recommendations from F-PAC. And honestly, the, looking at it, whether it was double, that's why we asked for concurrence to go ahead and look into the entire thing. Without knowing the contextual awareness, to the point that you brought up about surrounding jurisdictions and their rate of impact on areas that have higher density or are already overcapacity, if there are any formulaic modifications or adaptations, having that codified, so that we could actually report back in that level of granularity, so that you could have an awareness of what different types of nuances there are. And I believe that because this process is, is rather, as Mr. Moon said, it took a lot of time and a lot of people to come up with what was a fair component at the time it was originated.
Mm-hmm.
I think likewise, it would take us really dissecting and identifying all the elements to it, to make that kind of a, we should have it double, because I've seen some surrounding districts where the amount was equivalent to about double, or close, a third more. But again, I didn't have the road improvements, the contributions in kind, and anything else that may have been going on. So I'd like to have a more knowledgeable, informed position.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I do think we all agree that we do need to look at the formula again. There are two different aspects of the formula, right? I think Ms. Smith mentioned the cost per student, the cost piece needs to be looked at, and then we also need to look at the student yield ratios, right?
So when we, when we do the next steps, if my colleagues agree, I will include that, requesting staff to engage county staff to review the proffer formula, is that, but that will come.
And student yield ratio will-
That's a part of that. That's part of the whole thing. With that, I have a Mrs. McLachlin, to be followed by Ms. Hines.
Not only do I appreciate the presentation, but I want to thank my colleagues for asking some really important questions. Some of you have already asked ones that I was thinking about, so I just want to comment and reinforce the fact that I think that these are very important things we've got to look into. Mr. Plattenberg, I share, I think, your desire, and I imagine all of us sitting around the table, we want to make sure that our, you know, cost estimates, our formulas we put forward are going to still make us competitive here in Fairfax County. We don't want to deter, you know, developers from wanting to come here to Fairfax. But that said, we also want to make sure that the burden then doesn't shift on to taxpayers, because we didn't, quite frankly, calculate enough. And so I wanted to just share with everyone that when I served on the turf task force, one of the things that was- one of the things that was very beneficial to all of us on that joint county group was basically looking at the surrounding jurisdictions and seeing what they were charging the out-of-county groups who wanted to come in and have field usage of those artificial turfs. And one of the things we found in that task force was that Fairfax County, in fact, wasn't charging as much as the surrounding jurisdictions. And so, you know, you don't want to give away the milk for free if you don't have to. And so I appreciated what you said, which is, let's look at what it is that we need to do to position ourselves to be competitive, but also not, you know, accidentally realize that we are really well below what we could still ask for and still attract people to come into our county. So I think that's really a step in an important direction. I also shared Mr. Stork and others' concerns about when we have new developments, and I think it's all weighing on our minds. We look at, you know, the Tysons development and what it's going to take to build some of the elementary schools that will no doubtably be needed there. And it's one thing with these formulas that talk, that seem to really account more for when you've got existing buildings and you can absorb them in and, you know, a modular to maybe add on some additional class space. But when I think about the cost of, you know, land acquisition, new buildings, some of these calculations are newer for me to be understanding, but it worries me. And so I just wanted to emphasize that based on what Mr. Stork's experience was before I joined the Board with like South County area over there, I think that's a wonderful way of using history to help us make sure as we approach Tysons, to make sure we don't find ourselves in that. And I think this yield ratio sampling is extremely helpful, and I heard my colleague, Ms. Evans, talk about, you know, how we can maybe dig a little deeper into that data again to help us with our projections. Because some of those numbers up there, I look at and think, oh, we've got some homework to do, because the closer we get to those projections, then hopefully, again, it's not going to fall on this county and the taxpayers to try and figure out how to pay for the cost. And to Ms. Smith and my colleague, Ms. Schultz, who live out in the western part of the county, I spend quite a bit of time out there as well. I can't help but look at what has happened to our elementary schools, especially out there, and even the fact that we need another high school out in that direction. But those all come at a cost, and I don't think we actually got enough proffer money that could ever possibly have covered the cost for all the construction. So I'm eager and excited that you all are committed to working with county staff. And I would just say that I know my colleagues and I would like to be there and provide whatever additional support that may require elected officials to have some difficult conversations in saying, if our school systems can continue to be one of the best in the nation, then when we're looking at development, we cannot short-change what's going to happen in terms of the impact of needing school buildings, not just parks and roads and things like that. So it really is a partnership with the Board Supervisors and between the two county staffs. It sounds like you guys really are embracing that, and that's helpful to our county. But I do want to make sure that if you need this school board to lend its voice in saying, we absolutely have to learn from the past and do better as we approach Tysons in particular, I welcome being able to do that.
Okay. Thank you. I have on Ms. Hines next, and then go-backs.
Thank you. Thank you so much. This is really helpful. You know, proffers feel like this mystery, right? For those of us, I get the emails and it says, okay, there's a proffer coming your way. And I, okay, what do I do about this? You know, I don't even really know. So this is very, very helpful. And I, the conversation with my colleagues has been helpful to me, too. So thank to everybody. I just had a couple of comments. I do think, somebody brought up the modular construction cost, Mr. Plattenberg, and you said maybe that's something that we could stop fitting into the formula somehow. And I guess I would encourage us to do that, to stop, because I think we, you know, we kind of put up with a lot of temporary classrooms in this, you know, school system. When people come from other parts of the country and they, they're surprised, you know? People don't tend to complain about the fact that their kids are in a trailer, but people coming from other places are surprised. They say, wow, Fairfax County, and look, you know, look at where... So we know we have a capacity problem. And I don't, what I'm thinking, when I look at this, it looks like we're sort of building modular temporary classrooms into our expectations. You know what I mean? And I don't, I don't know if that's true or not, but that would, if we stopped doing the modular offset, I mean, that would, it doesn't do a lot, right? But it would help us a little bit. Okay?
Yes, it's a couple hundred dollars. That's what Greg was telling me.
A couple hundred dollars per student, right? So that adds up, right? Okay. And then, just, I guess I'm reiterating what some other folks have said. I would like to see, again, the Board be helpful as much as possible on a few questions because this may become a political conversation. And one is, you know, the whole level of service thing. I mean, I guess I understand that this came about in 2002 as a way of beginning the conversation, and it does feel at this point pretty arbitrary, that it's like 50%. I don't, I'm not sure I can even explain to people, you know, constituents, why 50% was chosen, other than that it was kind of like a political conversation and that's where we ended up. I mean, if somebody can explain to me better what it means, I...
Again, as I stated earlier, at the time, there was a lot of compromises made, made, and it was basically, not all our school buildings are brand-new.
Not all.
Average age could be about 25, and a building can last about 50 years. I think there was halfway, they made a 50% at the time, level of service.
Right. But as Ms. Smith said, if we have new students, we need new space, right? I mean, I...
New students could also go into the old building.
But if...
Existing?
Okay.
So, again, there was a compromise at the time. And if you're going to direct, if you're going to direct a staff to engage county staff, that can be a part of the conversation.
Got you. Yeah. No, and I agree with that, and I'm glad, I mean, what I hear Mr. Plattenberg saying is that staff is willing to have that conversation with staff on the county side, but I hope what you're hearing from us is that we are willing to back you up on that and have that conversation with our counterparts on the Board of Supervisors as well. And it was just, also, you know, I'm just feeling like we need to have another sort of formal conversation with the Board of Supervisors in general on infrastructure. And I know we just went through that last year, and we've asked to do it again, but I think we should add to that, whether or not, or the idea that we should be involved in the comprehensive plan development. I mean, I think that's a good idea that came up, and all these questions about proffers. So, thank you.
Okay. I see a lot of excitement on the part of both members. I have Ms. Delana Kofax as the last one to speak in the first round, and then I have a couple of go-backs. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. Dr. Garza and I were talking about what Ms. Hines, the last part of her comment, and, you know, we had heard from the county board that they were not that excited to continue with the Joint Infrastructure Finance Committee. However, there have been several comments today about, you know, going, staff-to-staff going together, and then Board members also saying, we would like to weigh in, we would like to be part of this. So I may be inclined to, after, allow the staffs to move forward, and then may be inclined to talk to Chairman Bolivar stating that on behalf of us, that perhaps we revisit one more time if those people who initially were on don't want to continue, maybe, you know, having new people involved from the county and also having that. The other option is, you know, we had, I had asked Dan, and he said they had brought it up on the Joint Budget Development Committee, they brought it up as a point, but never really got to that particular issue as something, any type of deep substantive conversation.
So I was suggesting to the chairman that we could craft a letter under her signature, assuming this is supported by the Board, asking for them to consider reconvening the IFC for the purposes of looking at the comprehensive plan and looking at, you know, proffers and the methodology around proffers, if that's something that you'll be interested in.
Let's make that as the next step, if both members agree. As you recall, that when we had a joint meeting about this last time, that I, at the time, as the chairman, made the request to the county Board of Supervisors, and they were not thrilled to hear that from me. Ms. Delana Kofax, are you done or...
Yeah, I'm done.
Okay. Anybody else for the first round? Okay. Then I have Mr. Schurz and Mrs. Strauss and Mrs. Smith, and hopefully, hopefully, we can do in five minutes so that we can take a lunch break. Okay. I have on Mrs. Strauss.
Okay. In this particular formula, where we are looking only at new construction as a result of a rezoning request, one of the pieces that have always been missing is that in the county's comprehensive plan, where they are affirmatively looking at node cities, they're looking at new urban areas, increase in jobs, good thing, all of that. But that puts dramatic pressure, not just on new housing, but on existing housing and how that's used, how it's redeveloped. We also have the, as we have demographic shifts, we have more families who not only look at multi-generational housing, but look at compound. And I have that in my community, and there's nothing wrong with that. That is just a tradition in the culture. But in all of these formulas, this does not look at the impact on student growth and families in existing older communities or as they turn over, correct? And would that be something that we would want to bring up with the Board of Supervisors?
Correct. Yeah, this is looking at new construction for residentials or comprehensive plan amendments, but rezonings, thank you.
Yeah.
But I think also the other part of it is the projections process, which is a separate process for student enrollments, and that's an opportunity where you can look at what's happening in the communities locally and factor in trends that are occurring out there in terms of projections.
Because that's pretty dramatic. And clearly, from the Board of Supervisors' viewpoint, the creation of jobs assumes there's going to be more people and there are going to be more households, and it's not all new construction. So, thanks.
Okay. I have on Mrs. Schurz next.
So I just want to, I want to thank Ms. Evans and I don't know who else, maybe Ms. Smith brought this up and a little bit, Ms. Strauss. The issue of these being division-wide norms or division-wide ratios is, I think, one of the essences of the issues that we've experienced to date, is in not having, and a little bit what Ms. Strauss was just talking about, is the need for this to not only address existing homes, but to be regionalized. Taking an impression of a yield inside the Beltway, for example, in Ms. Evans' district, and trying to apply a multifamily yield and imply that that multifamily yield will be exactly the same maybe in Centerville is, I think, potentially not accurate, but I don't know. And that goes to the request, and I'm going to second the request for the data that's behind this, because I think it could be potentially revealing. So that's one point. The second is, and Ms. Smith was definitely on this, as was Mr. McElveen, and I've experienced this certainly in my district and as of late, the issue of advance notice in some way for there to be a more cohesive collaborative approach to the advance notice of impending construction. Because basically, right now, the switch is flipped when we get an email box, something in our inbox that says you have a proffer. Well, that means it's already done. And we're getting ex post facto notice, and we're not a part of even the conversation. We're not even educated that there is going to be impact to a school in our district or to a neighborhood in our, in our district. So that is crucial. CPDC has met a couple of times in a revival period where we're experiencing potentially a renaissance. And I think this is one of the reasons why CPDC almost needs a slightly different mission is to be the bridge or the active committee of the Board on issues like this. I do think in terms of going forward, this is not new for me to say, that I think that we should be discussing across districts with Prince William. And I'm hoping that there are some things that we can learn from Prince William. And specifically with the modular issue, any time that we're professing the use of a modular, either in a CIP or after the fact, I think that the Board's policy and direction to the superintendent, and I'm interested to get the, test the waters with my colleagues, that a modular is a temporary building, and it should be a temporary policy, it should be a temporary solution. And I think that the use of a modular has to be accompanied by the strategy for not using the modular, how we get out of it. So if it's going to be a, you know, 12, 18, 24, 36-month solution, then that's the if statement. If we get the students we're projecting, we're going to use the modular. The then statement should be, then the solution we're proposing to the Board is, you know, X, Y, Z for untemporally housing our students. So I don't know if you have anything to say to those points, but those, I think, are essential. I do think that there are some next steps there.
Mr. Schurz, I think that is more as a part of a CIP discussion than proffer?
Well, it's sort of, unfortunately, you can't pull out one thread.
I was going to come to that when we have a CIP discussion.
You can't pull out one thread because they're all related.
Yeah, the three points you mentioned, the countywide is really the criteria that was set forth in the original agreement, so we are tied to that, vetted to that currently. That's why we ask for seeking continuation of that dialogue and be happy to include that portion. The touchpoints you mentioned are on Slide 5, when we go through the three different iterations of the touchpoints, but we also have the takeaway of today's meeting, that every member would like to have a copy of all of the notifications, and then perhaps we could provide an annual summarization of where we are. And then the modular component was a recommendation of staff that we, if in my presentation or in Greg's presentation, in my follow-up comments, was really the suggestion that we kind of exclude that. But again, that would be part of the dialogue and discussion. So they're duly noted, and we concur.
Okay. Thank you. Mrs. Smith, you will be the last one on this.
Thank you. The conversation about whether we send a letter to the Board of Supervisors asking either to do infrastructure finance to talk about this, I would be more comfortable if we let staff do some work on this first and get information, because I don't want to go blindly into advocating for something with the Board of Supervisors till we have enough background knowledge about the situation and what they think we can do. So that would be my preference, to do that first.
Okay. We'll do the next steps, and then what Mrs. Smith just said might require some discussion at the time, but we'll do next steps. Could we do next steps? We have a lot on the next steps. I only have three.
You only have three? Oh, I have a lot more.
Probably Mrs. Evans has a components, subcomponents of what I have. Okay. Oh, requested LRS members in addition to, I think that's all Board members now, all Board members be providing information about the proposed use of proffer funds. Could they make it that way? All Board members be provided information about the proposed use of proffer funds. Is that acceptable? Okay. Thank you. And the next one is consensus that the Board Chairman would send, okay, that requires some discussion. Okay, so we'll go to the third one first. Request for additional information, data on the multifamily yield formula across...
We wanted to all look at the background on the sampling.
Okay. Why don't you, why don't you keep, why don't you give us proposal sentence?
On the ratio yield formula. Ratio? Yes. Take out both, I think.
Yes. Well, but it was specifically on the sampling of the 45.
Microphone.
Use the microphone, Ms. Evans.
I believe, I believe this one related to the sampling of 45 residential developments and the requests that we get, that the background data be provided, including on which residential developments were sampled and what the findings of each were. So, that specifically had to do with the sampling, the sampling of 45.
What should the sentence say?
It should say, provide inform...
Total block.
Additional information and data on the sampling of 45 residential developments referenced in the, yeah.
Forty-five.
Right, this is on page 18 of the...
You don't need to put in a number, I don't think. I think you just need to say the sampling.
As long as we know what we're talking about. Sampling of residential developments. Okay, you know what we're looking for, okay.
No. Don't need that. And then, and then I had, staff to engage the county staff to review the proffer formula.
Mr. Moon, did that also include other jurisdictions? I think...
As a, as a part of that, they would have to do background research on looking at other jurisdictions, et cetera.
Well, and also on the student... Also on the student yield ratio, we were looking for, well, it would be engage with county staff on the proffer formula and the student yield ratio. Wasn't that part of that conversation as well?
That's a part of the formula. In order for them to do that, they have to do all those background work first.
You're saying that's all included in...
That's all included.
In the proffer formula.
Okay, I think with that, I think we are done, except now we have to discuss about the consensus since Mrs. Smith made an alternate proposal, suggestion. Okay, what is said right now, there is consensus that group of the chairman would send a letter to the board of supervisors, chairman requesting the joint infrastructure finance committee convene for the purpose of reviewing the comprehensive plan and the proffers process. And Mrs. Smith's suggestion is before we did that, staff engage county staff to, just to check on the temperature, is that?
No, I think we kind of need more details about, you know, if staff does the work and looks at the different pieces, and, I mean, you're going to find out where the pressure points are, but then they can come back to the, the school board and kind of let us know, this is where we had success, this is where we didn't, and then we can have in our minds where we feel like we need to push and where we feel like, okay, that's, that's okay. I just think we need to be more informed, and the best way to get the detailed information is, is to have more background from the staff to staff work.
All the board members, yes.
I would prefer to do it that way, as the chair. That's what I, that was my initial consideration. That's what I would prefer to do, to have the staff conversation, follow that up, and then meet, you know, and then have the opportunity to talk to Chairman Boliva as well, and then send out the formal letter. That's my preference.
Okay, Ms. Hines?
Well, I'm just wondering about the timing of it. Could we not reach out to Chairman Boliva and say, we want to get the committee back together? But before the committee would meet, there would be some staff work to do ahead of time. And so, rather than, I mean, I just, I think we should signal to the board of supervisors that we are serious about getting this committee back together, and these are the things we want to talk about. We understand that there's staff work to do ahead of time, but I personally, I would not like any more time to go by before we reach out to the board of supervisors and say, we want this committee to start again. So, ah, just my thought.
Okay, any other board member? Let's see, with a show of hand, which approach should we take? Whether, what appears up there should be the approach we should take? Or, or we should take the approach of the one Mrs. Smith had suggested? With a show of hand, if you support what's up there, raise your hand. I think that carries. Okay, thank you. With that, we'll take a lunch break.
I wanted to say, I did think that we, that there were a couple of other things that weren't captured here.
Okay.
And one of them was the desire to have more earlier information on the comprehensive plan changes and on the, and zoning and new development. I'm not, I don't think we've actually captured that. That was from Mrs. Smith and from a couple of others, Mrs. Strauss.
From our staff?
Well, just for the county, my understanding is what you were asking for was, and what, what Mrs. Schultz was asking for was that we get, that we, the board, our, the school board get a better advanced notice on changes in the comprehensive planning. Did I understand you correctly on that, Mrs. Smith?
I think I was just in general, information about the comprehensive plan, because, you know, we know somewhat about it, but whatever, we should need to be informed about it. I mean, definitely you want to know about the changes, and I don't know if that's information that could come to the board written, or we would need a work session to talk about the comprehensive plan. The question I raise is, are we better informed to help advocate for staff and for the schools if we're a little more knowledgeable about the comprehensive plan? That's the core of my question.
I certainly agree with you, but I think Mr. Plattenberg wants to say something.
Yeah, I'm sorry. That could be a subcomponent of the IFC, because that is a county process. Yeah.
So, it might be something to include in that, and then I guess I just didn't want to let drop, I, you know, I did somehow want to capture whether, whether staff just understands this, that there were some specifics on the student yield ratio about being near metro areas was one that I heard, older communities was another one I heard, whether we wanted to consider doing it regionally rather than countywide, and, and I had mentioned income levels, so...
That's, that's a part of, when they, when they review the formula, they're having a part of the work they have to do. Okay, thank you. With that, yes?
Okay, also...
You want to, you want to list them all with the parenthesis? Is that what you want to do?
Well, let's put some examples up there, because, you know, we've, we've mentioned several things.
You could put comma after jurisdictions, and add a couple of those, right? Because it says proffer formula, including research on other jurisdictions, looking at older housing areas.
Well, we're looking, in this case, it's the student yield ratio we're looking at.
So, could you say the variance of student yields in different parts of the county?
We're trying to capture exactly that thought.
Okay. The variance on student yields in various parts of the county.
Yields.
I worry we, we think we know what we're talking about, and then we look at it six months later and, you know, haven't really captured what we were saying.
Housing types, areas.
You know, but you know.
This is, I don't...
Let's do this first and then see what it is. Okay. Okay, Ms. Evans, what else?
The notion of looking at a, oh, let's see, different parts of the county, such as near metro areas. You don't want to do that? You don't want to get in that? Okay. All right, if nobody else wants to capture it, I just, you know, I, as long as staff knows what we're looking for, then that's fine.
Okay, anything else? Mrs. Smith? Okay, with that, we are really going to take a lunch break and come back 10 minutes after 1 o'clock? 1:15? Well, we have managed to use up all the time we...